Now pay for. Um, I, I believe I sent the, um, the paperwork to Angela.
Yes, we have, we have it here.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, question is, is the total price seventy-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-two? And then you add the American Fence Company into that, or is that total all in?
That is separate. So what you're looking with the seventy-eight thousand, that is just, um, what you see in the pictures. That's the playground, the two swings, and then the swing, like the entire set. And then the fencing, we'll see two, um, you'll see two papers. We're gonna fence our back playground and as well as our front playground. So, um, the thirteen thousand will be for the front playground and for the back.
Okay, so the ten thousand on the front is just, or the ten thousand is just for the front?
Yes, sir, that will be for the front playground. And then the back is the one, um, that has the total, which would be the thirteen thousand.
Gotcha.
You're going twenty-six thousand dollars in fencing?
No, 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 thirteen, if I understand it correct, thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
For both?
Both, yes.
For both, okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay, um, and do you, by offhand, know how much we have in our contingency fund?
Um, I think you've only done, uh, North U.
It was the only one done. So the balance in there now is forty-six thousand.
How much funding did you receive from, uh, from that company?
Dominion.
From Dominion?
Uh, they, they gave us seventy-five thousand.
And you got that, right?
You said they.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the total is ninety-one thousand minus the seventy-five, right?
It would be, for everything, it's ninety-one thousand eight hundred and two dollars.
Then minus the seventy-five, what do we have left?
So you're looking at roughly sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars is what you're asking for, correct?
Um, yes, we would, we would be happy with whatever that we were receiving.
How much, uh, Daniel, how much did you guys generate to school? Uh, less than seventy-five thousand, because the board likes to, so, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, we, um, my PTA worked, um, extremely hard, um, this year. I think that they raised in one year twelve to thirteen thousand dollars. And so this is only, we have like three phases of what we would like to do for our playground. Um, so this is just the completion of sort of phase one. We would like to add a pavilion because we were supposed to have Energy Express here this year, um, which of course is virtual. Um, but in order to have Energy Express and to have parks and rec, they have to have shelter. And we don't, we don't have that. So that is going to be our next, that's actually like phase two. We would use, um, any of the remainder money that we might receive from you, plus with what PTA has. We know that fundraising next year is gonna probably be very differently. Um, we can't do like the cash bash and everything that we normally do. But that pavilion is, um, it, it's sort of next on the list. So we, um, we know that we're gonna have to raise some more money, so we sort of set that aside. Um, hopefully to add to what else we would like to do. This is just the beginning of what we would like to do for our playground. We wanna add some stuff to the back as well. First and foremost, we just wanted to make it safe, so.
Mr. President. Mr. President. Uh, actually, under, under, you know, the rules that we've set forth, they would be eligible for the maximum match of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, so I would make that motion.
All second. Okay. All right, so I think, um, there's been a motion to grant twenty thousand dollars made by Mr. Hammack. And there's been a second by Ms. Messenger and Mr. Doherty. Uh, is there any discussion on this?
Okay, now, is this just twenty thousand on phase one? Or is this twenty thousand on the complete project?
Just for this.
Under the contingency, we can only give that, they can only do it one time. And it's a match up to twenty thousand fifty percent. If they have a phase two, they'll have, you know, we'll have to, if we need to assist them with that, that'd be in another budget year, and we'd have to kind of figure out some other way.
Yeah, that would be just one time.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it one time a year that can come?
Yes.
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 Right, so it could come again next year.
It could also be done. Could be done if other schools come forward with projects that have never been funded.
Whatever the desire of the board is next year, uh, obviously if the pass is gonna be twenty thousand this year, the board desires to give them some more next year.
Yeah, but our contingency would reset next year.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Daniel, you are funded, twenty thousand.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. You made my day.
Enjoy.
We're glad to do that.
All right, thank you. Next we have, you're welcome. Next we have up Audra Blackwell of Energy Systems Group. Doc, do you want to bring her in?
Audra.
If you would get convenient and all that.
Yeah, that'd be. Twenty thousand.
Yeah. So they're gonna put in twenty, right? Good morning.
Good morning. You are free to present.
No, I'm gonna stand up. Is that okay with you guys? Okay, um, just wanna thank you all for your time today. Um, also wanna thank you for all of your efforts on the front lines as you continue to provide for students and families in new creative ways during the pandemic. I hope you and your families and staff, Harrison County Schools are healthy and safe. That's the most important thing. Um, the next slide, please. Um, you know, we've been over this before. I was gonna come in today to talk to you about some of the savings that have been generated through the projects. Over the past seven years, we developed a great working relationship and partnership, and there have been significant improvements made to the schools. Harrison County Schools should be commended for all the improvements that they have made. They've made capital-intensive projects that needed to be done and had the ability to specify what they needed in their schools. And the work has been completed faster and quicker through the guaranteed energy savings performance contracting process. Every project so far has been ready for the school year to begin. And none of these, um, well, every one of these projects have had a guarantee of no change orders. So we have not come back and asked you guys for any additional funds for these projects as well. During this process, we've been working with Jimmy Lopez, Joe Ammons, Roger Romaine on the facility side to see what are the next needs that need to be addressed. And Sharon to see what Harrison County Schools can afford. And of course, Dr. Manchin with his vision and support guiding us to success. So you can see through the different phases, we've gotten a lot of work done. So the next slide is a mighty impressive chart. I hope that you can see it, um, from your screens and from where you're sitting. It has big numbers. It is a cumulative total of phases one through three. In two thousand nineteen, we guaranteed one point two million dollars in savings. We beat that by thirty-three percent to get one point six million worth of savings. So you all are doing very well. Obviously, from this graph, you're going to continue to do well in the future. The projection for the future looks very positive. So if you look at this chart, it shows that we're not only meeting the guarantee, but we are beating the guarantee handsomely. Guarantee is the blue line, the bottom blue line. Uh, the top first four points are the actual numbers. And then the, the line that is going up is the extrapolated, um, actual numbers that we expect to see in the savings. And, um, as long as the buildings continue to operate the way that they're operating, you'll see this saving. So these savings go through the year twenty thirty-three.
If I may, real quick, Audra, the, uh, the fact that the buildings are closed, how's that gonna impact, uh, this, the numbers and everything? The, the buildings will be closed tomorrow through the remainder year. I mean, as far as electric, as far as energy or all that, the, 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 the buildings are dark now, so.
It should really go up.
That's what I would say.
Yeah. That because we've got them running on a very minimum schedule, all of our schools. And so they're basically, like Doc said, they're in the dark except for four hours a day.
Um, one thing, I did have a look at that because I know that you all have a lot of needs in the county. You're looking at doing a lot of projects, you're looking at your budget today, after hearing all that. Of course, knowing that those schools are dark, I'm like, ask the engineers, what, what can this bring to the table? Can this bring something to the table for the county? And they're super conservative at this stage because it's very, you know, it's early. And, um, they think that just in the two months, you've saved up about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Just in these last two months from being.
The last two months, and that's very conservative. I just wanna, you know, point that out because we always ask them, can you get some more savings, you know? But they're very, very careful.
Up to now, hundreds of one.
Just the two months.
Okay, so now we're talking May.
Well, you're usually out in the summer, so you know, that's.
Well, May, early part of June.
It's May now.
Yeah, okay, just May, so, so, okay.
So April, May. So I, I'm actually, I was kind of excited about that because I thought, well, maybe that sums up a bit towards the next phase of work. But, um, so that's the next, if, if you don't have any questions on this, does anybody have any more questions or anything?
Or food service.
Yeah, you got the food service. Okay, so, um, we've had a couple of meetings to talk about phase five priorities. Last week, uh, we all met, we met with the principal of United High School. And I know I heard when Sharon was talking about the, um, budget and the ALC relocation, you know, to Wilsonburg. Um, we've talked about looking at some improvements there. Um, these priorities are prioritized, working with Joe, Jimmy, and Roger, um, from the highest of importance down to, you know, and this is just from their view. Obviously, we can discuss all these items, so it's just a starting point. Um, for Wilsonburg Elementary, there are three RTUs that are past the useful life. That is one over the cafeteria, one over the gym, and one over room fourteen. They need a domestic hot water replacement, backflow prevention valve, and, uh, two bathrooms need to be upgraded because you're gonna have, um, older kids in that school. Um, also a fire alarm upgrade and a new roof. So when, you know, when I'm talking to you about this, this is all the stuff that we've identified as potential for phase five. Um, Nutterford Primary, we talked about this last year.
Wait, wait, before you go to Nutterford Primary, is there a total on the Wilsonburg? Do you have a preliminary total?
I have a preliminary total, all in, you know, right now, because this is budget.
When you say all in, you mean this?
The whole list.
Okay.
The whole entire list.
I apologize.
Okay, all right, so Nutterford Primary was seventy-two water source heat pump replacements and four energy recovery units. That's very similar to the project we did at Big Elm. It's a major surgery to the school. New boilers that are needed now are Bridgeport Middle School, Robert Seabird, and one here at the board office. Some of these things were mentioned when y'all were talking about the budget. Um, the next, the rest of the lighting, to standardize all the lighting in the county, there are actually, it says six schools up there, but there's seven schools that still need LED, including Wilsonburg. So that would be done, that would help with the energy savings. Also, uh, we discussed, uh, the security entrances. And, uh, of course, we talked to Mr. Winkie. We've been out to look at the schools to, you know, address those because we know that's very important to you. Um, we put Wilsonburg as number one because if you're already working in Wilsonburg, it would make sense to do the security entrance there. The other schools on the list are Lincoln High School, South Harrison Middle School, South Harrison High School, Bridgeport Middle School, and Bridgeport High School. One thing I forgot to put on this list that we discussed, and it's, it's minor compared to the whole entire project, but probably gonna be very important to you, is a system that is called the Global Plasma System. And it kills airborne viruses. So when you guys go back to school, it would be very important to have this, or at least try it in a couple locations, to see if it reduces absenteeism in the schools and, uh, kills these viruses that everyone's fearful of right now. So it's just something to consider.
I have a question. If you put it in a school and later that school closes, can it be taken out and put in the new school or in the?
Yes, it can, it can be moved, and so can any of this stuff. Um, the other thing is it's, it's a minor cost as compared to the whole entire project, so.
I'm, I'm a little confused, to be honest with you. I'm looking at this and it looks like, uh, like a, like a CFP or something. Like, I understand where you are on the hot water. But when I see two bathroom upgrades, you're talking to, and a new roof, it, fire alarm upgrades, that, what does that have to, what do you guys do there? Just out of curiosity.
Okay, so we, we had this discussion, um, you know, just to let you know, we are guaranteed energy savings performance contracting company. The West Virginia Code allows us to, you know, you have to implement an energy conservation measure, but it procures us to do anything you wanna get done in the county. The reason why that these are included here is because interest rates, and that's gonna be my next slide, are historically low right now. So it, it would give you the benefit of getting things done quickly and things that you're gonna have to do to that school anyway when you move the kids from, uh, United High School in there. So it's just a consideration.
Okay, okay, well, then what about security entrances? Does that mean we, you would build them?
Well, when we actually put these projects together, we put them together from the standpoint of how can we get you the biggest bang for your buck? Can we get savings to help buy those projects down? And we subcontract those projects out to local subcontractors that you have worked with, you like working with, that have done this before, that you've had a good experience with. So we wouldn't build it. Actually, Jeff is our project manager, this is Jeff Allred. He's been the project manager on, you know, all the projects thus far. And, uh, he would manage the subcontractors for the different things that would be done in a project like this. Uh, so it wouldn't be like lighting, HVAC controls, it could include windows. We don't have that on the list here, but roofs, um, anything that you really wanna get done because it gives you the ability to get work done quickly, take advantage of the savings, and take advantage of historically low interest rates.
And free up our staff so that our maintenance guys don't have to do a lot.
Well, I just, I'm, I was just curious about the building part. I didn't realize we were doing that. And with Wilsonburg, when we applied for an MIP for that?
Um, I don't know that we could, but I don't see why we couldn't.
I'm sorry, I.
We could apply for an MIP for Wilsonburg. To renovate if we're gonna move.
No, remember, they told us not to come back.
Well, I used to say that too, but, uh.
Yeah, right.
I don't, I, I, yeah, we're allowed to.
Whether we get it or not, it's a different.
I doubt, because remember, they questioned us and we, we made the commitment to the SBA that any upgrades to Wilsonburg or Adamston where we moved, you know, would come at our expense. And if we go back for that, I don't think that it's gonna be worth it.
They don't remember that, Gary?
Yeah.
Yeah, I also think we need to continue saying, um, Adamston as well because there hasn't been any decision made, as far as I'm concerned.
That's correct. There hasn't been a decision.
We also need some preschool, a lot of preschools.
Um, one question I had is, I thought Bridgeport Middle had an entrance. Uh, they don't.
Well, they, they have that.
Dalton Elementary had their last door on.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the.
They've got the sliding doors where you have to, you have to ring to go in the first door, and then they're like.
Yeah, that's.
They don't have a secondary set that's locked.
Yeah, there's a second. Oh, the secondary set automatically opens, so it's not locked, gotcha, okay. I use my key to go in, so I don't know.
They have, uh, I don't know, did you mention, did you mention the, the Lincoln entry project?
No, but it is in our, it was in our budget.
We budgeted.
We did the budget, we did budget for the Lincoln.
And.
Ken's been doing one a year.
And what I wanted, yeah, he's been, and of course.
Do you have a second slide?
We wanna do all that, but I wanna make double sure that on the, we don't get too far down the road on the, uh, on the Wilsonburg because there's some construction going on. That's anything, uh, that I wanted to make sure that, you know, we don't wanna do something, have to move a door or move a, a, a wall or something like that.
Well, we're gonna need a recommendation on that.
Or, I mean, are we wanting to do a security thing to get into Wilsonburg while we're doing this project?
Yeah, I, I wanna do it as part of this project.
We already budgeted for Lincoln, so could those two maybe be on the, on the, you know, on the list for now? And then next year, maybe two more?
I, I'd like to focus on the, the, the energy savings, Audra. I mean, the, the construction side, I, we've got time to look at that. Talk about the energy savings and what we're talking about.
Okay, um, you know, what I wanna make very clear is this is just a starting point of the discussion. So if there are other things that come to mind that you all think of or you don't like, you know, this, you know, we'll work it out. Um, and we can discuss all those things. But, uh, the next slide discusses the particulars and benefits of a project like this. So that was really our starting point. And like I said, it's historically low interest rates. For doing all that work, basically, um, you know, you could get your financing for that project in the very near future and start doing the work now while there's no one in the schools. Um, and not have to make a payment on that until July of twenty twenty-one. So you can actually get the loan, get the work done, and not have to start.
Where the interest accrue?
The interest would accrue, but the interest rate.
You'll have to pay that.
What are the interest rates?
Well, they've told me I can use an indicative rate of two point eight five. So they, they're usually very conservative, so that could, that number could come down. But, okay, so let's talk about the savings, uh, that the project can generate the way that it's set up now, okay? Uh, basically, it can, it contains energy savings, operation and maintenance savings, refinancing, the potential of refinancing past phases that were at a higher interest rate, excess savings from previous projects. And by using all those energy savings that would be guaranteed, that would actually, uh, cost around, I mean, that would bring your project cost down to about four point seven million dollars paid out over time. So that would be the overall net cost of doing all that stuff, and you would, you would get it done quickly.
The only thing we can't realistic use though is the energy savings from previous projects because once we know that energy savings is saved, we're no longer budgeting for that saving. You know, I mean, for that expense anymore. So say you're saving ten thousand dollars in electric, well, then we would have cut our electric by ten thousand because we tried to budget what we expect our electrics to be. So I don't know that that saving is really there because we've already spent it somewhere else.
I hear your point's good. It's a one-time shot.
Once we save it, then we've saved it and absorbed it.
Cause then you budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and you know, it's, all in how you look at it, of course, I always work with you guys to put those numbers in there however you want to see them.
I just don't think you can show that from previous things to now.
The only thing we were talking about saving or showing, if it goes into your cash flow, so it helps your project.
Yeah, anything you do like new right now that would reduce our electric bill, then that savings would be there because we're not expecting that savings yet. But any other savings we've already had, we've already expected it and adjusted.
Okay, and I, I wanna go back to what you said about virus killing. And I see indoor improved indoor air quality, okay? What, let's go back to that. What and how and what schools are you looking at? I mean, what is that whole thing? I like. Okay, it, it is, um, you know, as, we don't have a cost on the, all the schools. We were just looking at a couple of schools to do that in. And, uh, it's an ionization type product, and it's put in at the beginning of the HVAC system. And it's used in hospitals already, so it's already proven, it's already been used in other schools as well. So, uh, that would just kill airborne viruses. And, uh, it kills mold as well, so that's very important. So to me, considering this situation.
That's why I brought up Washington, Durham. They have a mold situation, a lot of sickness, you know, airborne. And, and that's why I asked if it could be moved. If that school was done away with, then it could be moved either to the new facility or another facility.
My question is that's my priority.
A couple of them, and that would be, my, my thoughts, that would be an ideal place to try it out. And if it helps there, then we know that it's.
How about we, if you have her, get us information, we can have our medical director review that.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, I know that the CDC has looked at it, and so I'd be happy to provide that for you all. And also, uh, if there's just one of few schools, this thing is something that, you know, that is what you're saying. That's something we should look at if we're looking at historical low interest rates and all that, to put on every system. And you know, the other thing is to think of it from an engineering perspective. The engineers know what systems this really works with, and we would look at each particular situation and, you know, tell you guys where we think it would work for you.
Okay, great.
And I'll provide that information. Um, so, you know, like I said, right now, just looking at everything in this project, the way that it's set up, obviously, you know, if you wanna add, take away, pick and choose. Um, the way that it's set up, it's approximately budget-wise, high level, seven point one million dollars. But with all the savings that would be generated, it would actually cost you around four point seven million over time. And it would address the highest priority needs as, uh, as what we think they are now. And decrease operational issues, you know, reduce deferred maintenance, improve indoor air quality, complete the lighting standardization in the whole entire county. Every school would be LED at that point, and positively improve the learning environment. So basically, that's all I have. Um, if anyone else has any questions?
Sharon, what was the, you said you had spoken to the banks about the consolidation?
I just, I emailed the lady with my contact there and said, hey, is there a possible way that we could refinance some of these projects?
And pull them all in, I mean.
Yeah, there's two, there's two in particular. The other two are lower interest rates, so I don't think they would be probably good to refinance. But the last two we did were in the three point six five, three point seven five. Um, but I haven't talked, she said she wants somebody calling.
Now, now you're talking about two points.
Well, what we have, two point eight five is an indicative rate, of course, until the day of closing. You don't know what that really is, but that's what they're allowing me to use, and they're very conservative.
Where they get their rates at?
From Bank of America. Actually, that's one thing, I was gonna, I just got this email before I came in here. Our Director of Finance has actually talked to them, and that's where he came up with this two point eight five. So I'll connect you with him.
Is that half percent low prime or what, do they use?
I think prime's at zero right now, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I was gonna say prime is so.
It's so low, it's zero.
Our third phase was less than two point eight five.
That's what I'm kinda thinking.
That's our face was, um, I don't have it written down.
I thought it was two point four.
I wanna say that too.
Three point six five. Phase four was three point seven five.
What was phase two?
Phase one was two point nine, phase two was two point eight two.
Oh, that's two point eight.
It's the same rate.
Yeah.
So that's, that's equal to phase two.
Yeah, so you're, I mean, phase three and four are, you know, higher rates. You could actually.
I think we probably should take a little bit.
Yeah, well, you know, like we said, we like to be very conservative, even with us, um, estimating the budget with the savings, because this is preliminary at this point. Of course, we're wanting to come back and give you better news, right? And then that way it makes your finances look better when it comes down to cash flow.
If we can consolidate it, then we can be.
And get that up or.
Take care of that. I'll try. Ten one point oh. Negotiate. Don't you ever give me yours?
Well, that's all I have, so thank you very much.
Grows on trees up here.
Roger, what do you think about all this?
Oh, I think it's a good deal. I mean.
You're the experts that are in.
A lot of these projects are gonna need done anyways, like bad boilers and bad roofs. The bathrooms of Wilsonburg, they're gonna have to be raised up for the bigger kids anyways. So, yeah, we're good with all of them.
Out of Wilsonburg, I'm gonna make one private and make it a little lower for.
Well, there's some in the back, we were gonna leave them alone. We were just gonna raise the main bathrooms, you know.
I appreciate you thinking of that.
Too damn old.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
And you know what, uh, Ms. President and Board, if it's desirous of us to continue to review this, I think that'd be appropriate for much more in-depth discussion with some finances about what she's talking about. I'd like a little bit more information, uh, in our May twelfth meeting, which is a week away. That, I think that can be for further discussion.
All right, that'll be good.
So that means you're going to have the length of the time with us?
We don't have any, we don't have.
Nothing else but the one thing.
Just the one thing on May twelfth.
Okay.
I think you guys.
Thank you.
All right, Audrey, thanks.
Thank you, Audra.
All right, now we go down to item C, Nurses' Day Proclamation.
Mr. President, we have, uh, and it's okay, there's Nurses' Day, and this week is also.
Teacher Appreciation Week.
Which traditionally, I go up to the schools and read these proclamations over the loudspeaker, but, um, and for the purpose, uh, now, has the board already approved these?
You don't have to approve them, you just declare it.
Thank you.
You're the king.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, Ms. President, members of the board, it, it, I would like to read both of these. And I think, uh, our nurses and our teachers, uh, and, and I know we've been referring to Heroes' Day and Heroes, but I think that our, our teachers working, uh, under extreme conditions, uh, online instruction, which for many of them, uh, not a new concept, but a concept at this, uh, at this width and breadth that they had never faced before and have done an outstanding job. And of course, what can I say about our, uh, our nurses? Uh, Jody's sitting there, I see Jody there, and she and I have discussed this and the role they've played in helping us get, get through this issue. We will have the nurses tomorrow here in the office. Uh, socially distanced, I might add, but we'll be recognizing several of those. And what I would like to do is, Todd and I have been discussing about the possibility of me doing a video to all the teachers here in Harrison County, reading this. of me doing a video to all the teachers here in Harrison County, reading this proclamation, Mr. President. Whereas, a strong and effective system of free public education for all children is essential to our democratic system of government. And whereas, the teachers, through their daily contact with children of diverse backgrounds, provide critical links for the child's future success. And whereas, the teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. Whereas, teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education. And whereas, the future economic and societal success of our community and the world is dependent upon providing a quality education to all students. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Harrison County Board of Education proclaims May 4 through May 8, 2020, as Teacher Appreciation Week. Be it further resolved that the Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. As passed by the Harrison County Board of Education. And I would like to add to that, Mr. President, members of the board, if any of you would like to add to that and allow our teachers to know how much we appreciate them, particularly, I think everything has, has been magnified because of what we've been facing over these last six weeks and the job that they're doing in providing an education in difficult times has been exemplary. I've said this at the beginning of this crisis and I'll say it now, that the way people respond shows character or exposes character. And I think we've shown our character in our ability to address the needs, not only of our students and our communities, through education, but also through our feeding program. So, Mr. President, I appreciate this board and their support of our teachers. And would you like, would any member like to say anything?
If I could say something, I'd just like to say that for anyone out there who thinks that a teacher has it a whole lot easier by teaching from their house, I think the opposite's true. That's, that's so much more difficult what they're doing than just showing up to the classroom and, and teaching on an everyday basis. So I think, you know, a lot of people are thinking, oh, you know, they're just, they're just teaching from home and they can do whatever they want. It's, I guarantee they probably, it's, it's more taxing on them doing it that way, I guarantee it is. It is for anyone working from home. It's not as easy as, as people expect and especially teaching. It's really not easy when you have to make sure that what you're delivering is being received by everyone in that classroom and you have a bunch of hurdles to go over, so commendable.
I would like to say, it's been my experience with my children's teachers over the last four weeks to six weeks, that they have had more interaction and I've been able to see that interaction with those teacher-student relations to the point where the teachers have gone above and beyond and in a manner to stay consistent with social distancing, have dropped off items at the home that were part of lesson plans or that were part of curriculum that they were trying to teach our students. And they have been in contact with our students, with my students anyway. So I can only assume that other teachers are doing the same thing for their students. And I think Mr. Hammack is right, it's commendable. It's very, very commendable, the fantastic job that they're doing.
Well, I watch the news every morning and, you know, with this pandemic going on and everything, I think that for a long time, people have viewed, well, teachers have pretty easy jobs, you know, they, you know, they only work so many days a year and they get paid and, and they get their summers off and what have you. And a lot of people look at that and say, boy, they got an easy job. But now during this pandemic and the parents have taken on the role of the teacher, and I think now nationwide, I think there is a different view and a different light on the job that the teachers actually do. How they prepare them for the future, how they nurture them and, and, you know, build them up. And it is amazing, you know, kids at first thought, this is great, we're going to be off and all. Now, kids are wanting to get back to school, back to their teachers, back to their friends and back to the routine of every day. And now they've gotten to the point, they don't like it. And I know you see parents nationwide saying, we now, we understand and we realize and appreciate.
Respect.
Our teachers and respect them so much more than, than we did in the past. And I think that's to be commended. And if you look just here in Harrison County, I mean, how these teachers have gone above and beyond and video, I watched my grandson do a math video with the whole class and the teacher yesterday online and it went for well over an hour. And, you know, the visits to the schools, to see the teachers and the teachers, to see the kids, even though it was a drive-through, I think that, you know, as it says, we all will get through this. And I think we'll come out the other end better and stronger. But it, right now, it's taxing on everybody, but I think that the role to take away is unbelievable. Thank you.
All right.
Well, thank you, members of the board, and you've shown your appreciation to our teachers over the years by your actions and your policies. I might want to very quickly recognize Jody Sperry. Obviously, we have School Nurse Appreciation Day tomorrow and I want to commend her for keeping us straight and, and all the issues and keeping us informed with the Department of Health, Clarksburg, Harrison, Department of Health and all that she's done, given us direction and her nurses who have been working. We've talked about the teachers, but the role the nurses have been playing over here over these last several weeks, the job they're doing. And as the father of two nurses and a physical therapy assistant, I have a great appreciation for the role of the nurses. Do you want to mention anything very quickly, Jody, about our nurses and the job they've done over these last six weeks?
Sure, yeah, my nurses have been working from home as everyone has been. They've been reaching out to our medically fragile students via either phone or text. We, you know, been in contact with all of those students or their parents. A lot of them have been working our food sites where we see our students live, you know, or their parents. We've started kindergarten registration this week and we will be doing PK registration. So they're kind of anxious to get back in their buildings. They are actually starting to return this week to return medications to students. Because obviously, when we left quite hastily, we did not have time to return anything but daily meds. So now we're, we're starting to come back in and try to get the rest of our medication drawers emptied out because we don't want to sit on those meds for, you know, four or five months. But I will have to say that we have a, an outstanding group of nurses that work for our education system and we would not be able to do the job we do without them. This next year of school, whatever school is going to look like, is going to be extremely taxing on the nurses that we employ. And it's going to be a challenge for all of them. So they are up to the challenge, but it's going to be a challenge. So I think that's it and I, I, it's a pleasure to lead a wonderful group.
Hey, Jody, I had a quick question for you. With, whenever we're able to go back to school, and I know I talked to you briefly about the mask, but is there any, like, not that you want to have a school assembly, but is there any training that we can, that we're gonna have to go through with these kids on hygiene or all this stuff?
There's be all kinds of training. And actually, one of my nurses, Carol, is on a state task force that's actually coming up with plans. It's a multidisciplinary group and they're writing, they're writing the guidelines right now. And I don't want to really tell you what's going to be in the guidelines because everything changes so quickly. There's going to be trainings for everybody from the janitorial staff because they're going to have to know, you know, cleaning guidelines to preschool. That's going to be very specific because, you know, how do you tell a four-year-old to socially distance? To, I mean, it's, it's going to be very specific. And there aren't probably going to be assemblies of any sort, probably, based on what's happening now. But we got to think, that's three months from now and think how much our life has changed in 10 weeks, you know? So I don't want to say what it's going to look like in 10 weeks or 12 weeks because I, we really don't know. It's going to look different probably than a normal school year. And we just have to wait a little bit to see what it looks like as we reopen as a state. And we're working with a really group, a good group of nurses on a state level and with DHHR and Dr. Slim, who's a state DHHR, Dr. Kathy Slim. And we're, we're working on a plan. And, you know, daily temperature monitorings have been discussed. And how do you do that on a, how do you do that at RCB? You know, when you have 700 students walking through your door, you know?
Well, we need more nursing staff.
Possibly. And it doesn't have to be a nurse. I mean, not necessarily. You can, you could have other staff help you. I mean, we're looking at the thermometers that are no contact, like, you know, a trigger. And so, you know.
If I can say, you may want to look, and I know it's probably more pricey than what we can get into with our numerous buildings, but there is a system that, Kala County Courthouse, they're putting them in at their door, you walk through just like a metal detector, but it's a, it's a thermometer. It's getting temperatures you walk in.
But I don't think those are medically accurate because we, Todd and I talked about those a little bit, but I don't know about the accuracy if you're looking at children and protecting. I don't think the CDC guidelines allow that for schools.
Well, anyhow, I think the world will be a little different when we come back to school. We're working on a county directive, we'll be bringing it to the board probably in July. I've asked that they, we have a draft version of how school will look once we start in August or September, whenever school starts back. But I'd say to say that our nurses and, and our community members and our service personnel and everybody together collectively, we'll be working on a reentry plan, Michael, that I think you'll be pleased with. Thank you, Mr. President. That's, those are two proclamations that we have and we'll be reading those proclamations and putting that on a video probably this evening or tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Mansion. All right, next we have delegations. Are there any delegations?
I don't have any.
No delegations? This brings us down to superintendent's update.
Mr. President, we have a couple of things, very quickly. Dr. Hague, Donna Hague, I want her to give you an update where we are with our instruction, which has ran unabated over these last several weeks. And I think it is doing a yeoman's job in providing our children seamlessly with their continued education. People have stayed engaged, our teachers have stayed engaged and we are continuing to work with them. So, Dr. Hague, can you give the board an update as to where we are with our online instruction?
You can't hear. She's on you. You're on you, Donna.
Hey, Donna.
You want Donna? Donna, Donna. I'm good. Thank you. I'm just to echo the board's sentiment, our teachers have made a lot of work. They have added components to its mental health and some socialization for our students, particularly our U.S. students, so that they are able to communicate and keep a grasp of those social skills, which is very important, as well as reaching out to address coping and mental health. As you all know, our teachers responded with rock star energy when this first happened. And so we needed to pull that back in a couple of ways. And we have noticed a decrease in calls of, of parents that were concerned about the rigor and the time demands that the assignments were requiring. So we have noticed that piece up. And it seems like our teachers have got to agree with that. Really doing some really exciting things. This, this could be a tipping point in education. Our teachers able to collaborate across the county with colleagues and, you know, to keep students engaged and to keep us moving along. We did have pre-K, or we had kindergarten registration yesterday, the first day of online registration for kindergarten was yesterday. And we had 402 students to register for kindergarten online during the first day. So that's pretty exciting. That kindergarten registration continues through the rest of the week. You'll see our schools have signs out and they are collecting documentation. That is one way that, that parents can register for kindergarten as well as doing that online component. So we're also working with families that may need to wait some of that documentation until the first day of school, realizing they can't get into their doctor's office. We're actively planning summer professional development for our teachers, particularly in the areas of math. Those will be virtual professional development, but just really proud of the way that our, that our teachers and everybody, especially our parents, our families, our grandparents, who have really just risen to this task of providing instruction during these difficult
Thank you, Dr. Hague. Appreciate the job you're doing. Mr. Lopez, are there any questions?
Yeah. I, I mean, I was actually just looking at some of these other papers. My question, and I received several text messages yesterday, were about our grading system. What have we come up with? I got some from a state board as well, a letter from the state board, actually my cousin Paula, about what are we doing with these grades? My understanding is that if we went into this and they had a 90, that it's not going to go down. It can go up, but not go down, correct? Like, if, you know, considering that they aren't in the classroom and stuff, let's say I have a 90 in biology, I might be able to raise it to 98, but I certainly am not going to, you know, go to 78 in biology without a classroom, you know?
If you don't do the work.
Donna, you want to jump? I'm sorry.
I, I know I received a letter from the state, like I said, my cousin Paula sent me one as well. It was a task force put together. Can I get a little more information on that and what our policy is going to be?
Can you hear that, Donna?
Yeah, yeah, completely. We've had many conversations with the principals. And I believe that the guidance that you're looking at came from the West Virginia Department of Education, Kristin. And it did sort of set that mark to be March 13th. And it encouraged counties to look at March 13th and use that as a guiding point. If a student has, for example, a B on March 13th, then the state department recommended that you only use this time period to enhance that grade so that the student could bring it to an A, but so that it wouldn't fall. And I know Dr. Mansion has had that conversation many times with principals in that we will look at that March 13th grade and we will, students can improve that March 13th grade. We will, we will encourage them not to decrease that grade unless it's heavily documented by the teacher through multiple communication, reaching out to the kids, offering extended windows reached, as well as, as extended deadlines. So that is the guidance that Dr. Mansion has offered to the principals, that you can raise that March 13th grade, but you can lower it if you carefully consider and are well aware of the circumstances the child is in and have done everything you possibly can to support that.
And we had, we had extensive discussions over this and Kristin reported as well. The March, Mr. Birch, the state superintendent, didn't send out, no grade should be lowered. We felt that that would disengage and we'd lose everybody if you just let that happen. So we've, we've instructed the principals that if indeed a teacher comes to you, not only lose students, but lose teachers. One teacher's going to say, well, what are we doing? So I told them that, and Donna was part of that discussion, in fact, we all were part of that discussion, that if you just, if you are going to lower a grade, in other words, a kid has a B and he goes to a D, or worse, goes to an F, that you better have documentation as to that child has not been adversely affected by, by this pandemic, that their mom and dad did not lose a job, that you knew the conditions in the home, you knew a myriad of, that you were able to document all that and that the principal has reviewed it and agreed. Then Donna or I have to look at it and agree before we can lower a child's grade. It's, it's a very laborious process, but I think we need to leave that on the table to keep people engaged.
I do too. And the only reason why I brought it up is because it was on the news. I mean, and, and had it not been on the news, I would not have brought it up. I mean, and, and had it not been on the news, I would not have brought it up. Cause I agree, we have to keep everyone engaged.
That's exactly.
And, but, uh, it, it was on the news. And like you said, the state board, you know, put it out, it's in the West Virginia Gazette and, uh, it's in Morgantown. So I felt that we should address it since all of a sudden I got all these comments on it. Wish I didn't, wish they didn't publish that for all the reasons you just said. But, uh, it is out there, so I think that we need to comment on it.
In fact, they, they did a survey with us and, and we responded. Uh, and I think of the 55 counties, 52, and don't hold me to that, 52 said they would not allow rates to be lowered. There were three counties, including Harrison, that says, under certain conditions, that would we allow. And, and, and we articulated those conditions. But if we start allowing, just saying, hey, your grade can't go, it can't go down, then you've lost him. And I thought, I thought that was more detrimental.
And it's just not on the engagement. I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
If someone doesn't make the effort, you know, i- it's not just to keep the engagement. I agree 100% on what you, what you're saying. That if we make the efforts, the teachers write, write up. I don't, I, I, I think there should be a penalty for that because our teachers are making such an effort and our students are as well. So, um, I, I did want to just touch on that and I'm glad that ours is with conditions. And so I applaud you for that. I, I applaud you for that, okay?
I just had a question. Um, the graduations, how we're gonna do that? And then the last day of like grading or school, I know some counties, I've heard that they're ending earlier as far as their grading. They're still continue to send like fun assignments, but as far as the grading goes, I, I've heard other counties have kind of pushed that back just to the beginning of the month. Just seeing if we're.
Oh, sure.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
We have looked, um, we have looked at, um, and altered our grading periods. Uh, we added five days, um, to each one of our grading periods when all of this happened. Um, and we are looking at, uh, maintaining instruction clear up until May 29th. Um, and then I know Mr. Lopez, uh, wanted to talk a little bit about, um, cleaning out, uh, classrooms and textbooks and stuff. He may include a little bit of that on his, um, information. But we plan to continue instruction up until, um, May 29th. Um, of course, June 3rd is our last day of instruction in our official calendar. Um, but yeah, we, we are, we are looking at May 29th.
And Michael, I'll have, uh, in fact, uh, we have, and I've asked Angela that go in my office. We have the dates, uh, for all the graduations. And again, Donna and I have been working on this, but, uh, and, and we'll have this for you. But Bridgeport High School is June 27th at 9:00 AM, which will be lively, lively. Will be a live telecast by W D T V. Uh, Liberty High School, uh, June 25th, 9:00 AM. Lincoln High School, June 27th, 7:30 PM. And by the way, we'll have this, we'll hand that to you. Uh, Robert C. Bird High School, June 26th at 7:00 PM. South Harrison High School, June 25th at 7:00 PM. And United High School, June 22nd at 6:00 PM. Each one also has an associated rain date. And in every instance, uh, uh, W D T V will provide, uh, a video to be re, rebroadcast if it's not live. And from what I understand, and the only, the only live one would have to be Saturday morning with Bridgeport. Because of the timeliness in the evenings, they would be rebroadcast, uh, to be determined by, by the, uh, the television station. So, uh, those are the dates, uh, and it is our intent, uh, to go ahead with those dates. We believe that the, we was, we will be fine. The governor will have lifted his state home, uh, directive, as well as the blessings of the Clarksburg Harrison County Health Department. We will have each stadium taped off, uh, at six feet intervals. Uh, the math that we did with the number of graduates that, uh, uh, there will be no more than 500 people in the stadium. Uh, given the capacity that we, we'll be able to socially distance and comply. So that is our plan. We believe this is a rite of passage. We believe this is a, 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 a very important life event. And so we believe that to do it in person, and when I hear virtual, that's virtually nothing as far as I'm concerned. But, uh, uh, we, we are going to provide to each individual school, a, a live graduation. And parents, we're still debating if you've got any feedback, which I have. Uh, perhaps you saw in the newspaper, there, there'll be two tickets per. Uh, that's still gonna be left on the table for further discussion, given the math and how we might be able to do that. Uh, and, and still have the six feet distancing. Uh, we'll take a look at that, perhaps four. It'll be, it'll be per, uh, per student, not to be, uh, if, if, if a child does not use all four. He can't, at least tentatively can't give two to somebody else, so they can have six or eight or whatever. Uh, but, uh, right now, it's only two. Uh, that has not been taken off the table. Proms, uh, would not be sponsored by the, um, Board of Education. If you get wind, or you hear somebody is intending to have one at their house, or in their backyard, or anything like that. That's up to them. That, it, it would not be sponsored by the Harrison County Board of Education. Any prom would not be sponsored. No venue belonging to the Harrison County Board of Education will be used. But by all means, if any parent or any student, or whatever they want to do, if they want to have their own, uh, we're not intervening. So if you get wind that, we're not stopping people, uh, but they cannot use the school site. So that's where we are, Michael, and the rest of the board, as, as relates to the spring activity.
So just to clarify one thing, real quick, there is a possibility of being issued more than two tickets, but not more than four.
That's gonna, I'm gonna talk, we have a principal's meeting, we have a one, uh, a principal's meeting every week, uh, on Thursdays. So, uh, at that principal's meeting, I'm gonna put it on the table, yes, and answer your question.
I, I'd like to see at least four, I'd say.
I mean, just looking.
I, I've gotten some feedback, and the, the math may work, so we'll see.
Um, I have a question. Um, I think I sent you a message, actually, have we extended the use of our stadiums to Notre Dame? Just in case.
Uh, I, I.
Marked off or whatever.
Oh, I'm sorry, Donna, go ahead, Donna.
Not to me, Mansion, yes, yes, we did. I, I reached out to Julie Frosh, um, a couple of weeks ago to see if she needed, um, facilities. And she has a date established and does not need a stadium.
Okay, my other question is, is that, uh, I, this could be wrong, but I understand United High School, their graduation is gonna be in the cars?
No, in the parking lot.
Can we not have that in a, somewhere else where their parents don't have to sit in the cars?
Uh, absolute, no, we intend, it, it, that was, that was actually, we, we, we would have made any stadium available. She wanted to do it, it, on campus, uh, when I say in the parking lot, but it, it'll be in person where people can sit socially distanced. Uh, tentatively, we're gonna try maybe in a, in an area that is more bucolic, if you will. Uh, not necessarily in a parking lot, but it'll be on campus to be designated. But that was their desire, that, it was their desire to have it on campus. They said that they have 50 some graduates, which we've come a long way from the, the very early days of. They have 50 some graduates, uh, and, and, and they felt pretty strongly and they, they, they asked me, they want to keep it on their campus. So I said.
Okay. I just, I just heard, uh, my mother said, well, I, well, that's, that two are better than having to sit in your car. So I didn't know what the actual arrangements were.
Way to break out a doctor word, bucolic.
How you like it?
That was, that was, boy, that was spot on. Way to break that out of your toolbox.
What did you look it up?
You know, it means like in the countryside or in some, some, a, a pleasing aesthetic look, looking area or something like that.
Mr. President, I think that's, uh, Dr. Hague, and then, uh, Mr. Lopez, would you like to very quickly discuss facilities? Uh, I, I know a lot of the discussion has focused on, what are we gonna let people back? I might add, given some of the controversy that perhaps around the state that you may have heard. We're not gonna direct any employee to go to work yet. We're bringing people in, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna discuss it, and we're gonna try to make a decision, what's in the best interest of the, the employee, as well as the school's system. Uh, which, uh, we are bringing the, the union representatives in on Thursday, at least open up the discussion. Uh, one of the things that has been discussed, Jimmy, you might jump in here, when we are going to allow people to go into the building, not for the express purpose of working, but to clean their, their rooms out. Uh, and all of that, I think you, you put together a plan, and as part of your, uh, presentation, if you would, uh, if you would, uh, uh, get the board up to speed on the C E F P. I think there was some discussion, perhaps we've answered all the questions. And also give them some ideas of where we are with the Gore project, as well as the Lost Creek project.
Uh, okay, Dr. Mansion, and yes, I'll touch on those items. I have three or four things I will briefly summarize and of course, ask any questions, uh, as you may have then. First of all, the Lost Creek Elementary School, uh, project. Uh, the submission for the, uh, bid documents should have went into the S B A on Friday. Those, uh, documents, uh, should be released, uh, Friday, May the 15th. And, uh, hopefully it'll go out to bid on that particular day, has to be bid for 21 different days. And the bid opening, um, could happen as early as Friday, June the 5th. And construction can start immediately following. Um, so that's, uh, that's the update on that. Is anyone have any questions about the Lost Creek project?
I think it's excellent, Jimmy, I really do. Uh, that we've been able to move that thing and get the bid documents out there. Uh, I'll be interested to see when they open up the bids, uh, what the numbers look like. I know Michael, uh, or any of you all who want to come, uh, and, and we'll keep, we'll prize you, uh, that process, which is an interesting process. They actually have to submit, uh, uh, a, a big envelope, and there's a number of things they have to adhere to. And we open them up and just read the numbers out, so it'll be interesting. So we'll let you know, any board member who wants to be there while we open up those. And then I can foresee, early mid-June, you start pushing some dirt around or doing some things out there.
Yeah, I'd like to be there, so send me, send me some information. Uh, Jimmy, I was, I was curious if they were able to work, look at the, that parking lot situation. Did we, uh, I know they were talking about it, but.
Yes, Tom is currently looking at that. He had asked for some information, for example, how many, um, additional parking spaces could be necessary for the Lost Creek Elementary School staff? Uh, taking a look at the number of buses that we park out there. And, uh, so looking at maybe trying to do some alterations and gain some space, capture some space for additional parking. So he's taken all that into consideration. He hasn't, he's asked for a lot of information, but he hasn't responded back with a, a plan yet.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Uh, so as we move on to the Gore Elementary School project, we had on Friday the initial client meeting. Um, and really, all that we did on Friday was talk about the programs of space. Uh, we did, we were represented by both, uh, building administrators, uh, the curriculum staff, special needs, uh, staff. Uh, we're really looking at the program of space. And we also had our facility people, both Joe and Roger, uh, were in the meeting. Um, so we, uh, are in the initial phase. I know that, um, both administrators would like to visit the site, so we're setting that up now. Um, and I know that Doug had had a question about overlapping in some of our construction. The Lost Creek Elementary School project, you know, is, should be completed by the end of this year, December. And yes, we will be working on the planning phase and, and possibly even doing some of the construction before the end of this year. Uh, on the Gore Elementary School project. So we've already started in those phases, so they are overlapping. Um, if there are any questions with that, I'll move on briefly to the C E F P. Uh, the C E F P, we are going to send out a draft of our major need improvement plans that we have discussed to our members. And we hope to get some good feedback. I know that we are anticipating what the, the greatest need is, and I think we're all on the same. I think we're all on the same basis with that, and I do believe the committee is as well. I don't want to get too far out there and be, um, preemptive on. I want to make sure we get some good feedback from our members. And, and so we should be meeting within the next two weeks. I've talked to Tom Worlich, and being able to get that document in your hands to be voted on and approved by July 1st. I don't anticipate any major surprises. And I've taken into consideration a lot of the information that has been discussed. There certainly could be some site work done, um, as far as core drilling and those type of things. Not necessarily money budgeted for that at this time. A lot of times that money's budgeted, uh, through the project. Uh, but we can certainly take a look at that. That will be a discussion that we'll have with our, our members. And following the lead and directive of the board members and Dr. Mansion. If there are any questions about the C E F P, just briefly, I'll talk about the facilities. I've worked with, with Jill, the health department, with Jody and the health department. About a process when we get the opportunity to allow our teachers to be in the buildings. Not to work, but to be able to tear down their classrooms, prepare for summer cleaning, collect items from students. And we've talked about those procedures. Going to try to minimize collecting. We've worked with Todd about collecting the devices, uh, the electronic devices. And, and Todd has had some good ideas about maybe keeping those in the hands of the students. And that will be one last thing that we'll have to sanitize and clean and go through a process. And so that is, has been a discussion that Donna has had in her meetings for the beginning, um, with, with the principals' meetings. So far, we're not gonna have anybody in our buildings until after, I guess, our hotspot designation has been lifted. And Dr. Mansion has the opportunity to meet with the union members and come to some kind of consensus on what a good, safe plan would be to follow out with those procedures. So really, to have a precise plan right now, um, you know, I wouldn't be honest. Because we really need to see how this thing is going to unfold in the next day. So again, I'm working with our czar here in Harrison County, um, and Harrison County Schools, Jody Sperry, uh, to give me some good directive. Cause we're, we're certainly gonna be, uh, safe. And we're not gonna put anybody in any harms way. And of course, anybody that would come in is strictly voluntary. Any questions on the facilities? Okay, I just really wanted to say just one thing with the child nutrition. Uh, briefly, is, I've worked, you know, along with Chris Durico. Uh, that's one of the things that I oversee that I have, uh, not a whole lot of knowledge over. So I've learned more about child nutrition in the last month and a half than I ever thought I would need to. And, and, but I do want to compliment Chris because he's come into a very difficult situation. And I have witnessed him and, and been by his side when he's overcome some adversity, made some very quick decisions. And I just wanted to bring that to the attention of, uh, Dr. Mansion publicly in, in a board meeting. Cause I'm just very impressed, was very concerned, uh, about all this, uh, child nutrition. He continues to work very diligently, now is working on a summer feeding program. And I just wanted to publicly, um, express, uh, as a compliment of how well he has handled that situation. Doctor, if there's nothing else for me, uh, that is all I have for you.
Thank you, Jimmy, good job. And I share your, uh, complimentary discussion about, uh, Mr. Durico. I, I think he's done an incredible job. I really appreciate the job he's doing. I think he's listening, I hope he's listening, how much we appreciate stepping into what he did and the way he's made such an incredible difference. On behalf of the board and, and all the Harrison County community. So thank you on the job well done. I, I, I agree. Uh, Mr. President, that, that is all that we have for the superintendent's update.
All right. Uh, do you have anything for a special, for United Technical Center? Okay. All right, this moves us down to approval of consent items. Is there a motion to approve consent items as presented by the superintendent? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammer has seconded the motion, Mr. Hoag has made the motion. Is there any discussion regarding consent items?
I, one, I have something, but go ahead, Kristen, you go first.
Um, I just was noticing, well, actually I had to go through these a couple of times because I didn't realize they were back and forth and my computer's gone, there was some on the back. Um, I have noticed on some of our labeling that you have COVID-19 and then you don't. Like here we have the dairy products, 40,000, and then there was another food product that you have COVID-19 by. Are, are, are we doing something? Cause I know that 40,000.
We are tracking, uh, the Department of Education has asked us to track anything we're spending regarding COVID-19. Cause we can't transfer into the money that we. because we can transfer it into the money that we get. So it may be that that was just something whoever was in keeping the invoices was telling themselves this is the COVID-19 one. Um, so that's probably why you see.
Yeah, because then I see specialty.
There may be other ones that are COVID-19 that don't say COVID-19.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because then you have Gordon that doesn't have it.
The account code actually has something in it indicated.
Okay, that, that was only my, that was one of my questions. The other thing is, since I, I had to go through this, when you let, like, yeah, here's Gordon's service. It says COVID-19 food service, and then the other Gordon didn't have it on there.
The other one may have been the end of the summer program. I mean, the end of the school program before we started the COVID.
The other thing is, like, we have some that are lumped as Amazon. And since I have become a very avid Amazon and everybody has had to start using Amazon so much, when you have an expenditure of $10,000 to Amazon, and there's several other ones in here, probably more to the tune of like 15, $17,000, how are you tracking that? Like, who uses Amazon?
Well, almost everybody, Todd, is using Amazon.
I know that.
The business account. A lot of those purchases are probably a lot of the COVID-19 where we're buying masks and trying to get good deals on cleaners and that kind of thing. We're kind of shopping around trying to find the best where we can buy those things, so.
I just see it getting more substantial and, and, and there's not much detail on that, even for our budgeting. So I was curious about that. The other thing was for Doug, I did see on here 2088 for football helmet reconditioning, what we were just discussing. The other thing is unclaimed property and Marshall University tuition. What are those?
Uh, the unclaimed property is when we have checks, uh, that we haven't, that people have not cashed. And a lot of times we've tried to re, reach out to these people and say, hey, we've got these checks that we can't get. And you know how you get those things in the paper where people can apply and find their name in the unclaimed property? So anything that we can't get cashed, we have to by law set down claimed property. So that's a few checks that we haven't been able to get rid of, so they've gone down claimed property. The Marshall is probably, without me looking exactly, I'm going to guess it's tuition or it's something with Donna's people with a, uh, training. I'm not sure which, how much is it for?
Uh, 8,000, spring tuition, 2020.
Oh, is there probably their, uh, the graduate, the tuition thing?
Dual.
The dual credit or whatever we do.
Oh, I, I didn't realize we were using Marshall. What classes are we using Marshall for?
I'd have to ask them what the.
I, I didn't realize that. I thought they were all Fairmont or WBU.
No, we have, we have a number of.
Michael, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Um, on, it's like the third to last page. Menards Spaghetti Inn, almost $4,000.
We were hungry, Michael.
I can, I can tell.
Part of our food service program. It's something they serve lasagna, I think, in the school.
Yeah, yeah.
Every so often, the kids, the kids get a Menards.
We try to.
It's the frozen, it's the frozen, man. It's a school you just cook.
Yeah, the food, it's not the one, we're no one's going to the restaurant. It's the food being given to us to.
So that's part of the, that's because it wasn't labeled anything with COVID. So you're saying that's still COVID or is that something?
It wasn't, it wasn't necessarily COVID, it's part of the food service program.
We, we try to avail ourselves of some of the, uh, the local restaurants when we can.
I'm all for that. I've just, uh, while the kids aren't in, I didn't know, while we're making these food boxes, if they're getting Menards.
That's before the kids.
It was before the COVID food boxes came.
But maybe it just attached to the.
Well, let's just, yeah, we're just going to get the payments. So Marshall teaches math.
Well, do they?
Yeah, it's our math.
I just didn't know. I saw that and I saw tuition, it was like we're paying, and it was not on the academic achievement award.
It's a dual credit, they gave us a better rate.
Oh, okay, good. I was just, I was just curious when I saw that.
Michael, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I was just curious what, uh, how much Menards we, we were getting, uh, ordering at this time since we haven't been in session.
So Stan's got it.
Yeah. I remember one day my grandson said, we had Menards.
In which we, we had worked on it.
The, the only other question I have is like, when we see on here, like varsity image, a $5,000 scoring table for South Harrison High School, and then also the helmets. So those $60,000 we give to our high schools, the payments still go through us or do they have their own account payment?
No, the payments go through us. We manage the money, they just manage the budget.
So like that, like the $2,000 comes out of the 5,000 that, and this 5,000 comes out.
Of the 60,000.
Okay. Of their 60, I just, I saw that and I just wanted to make sure that's how that worked.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us down to number seven, item A, personnel. Is there a motion to approve the personnel agenda as recommended by the superintendent?
Sub moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to approve, Mr. Doherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
We lost two math teachers. I see. I hope we can replace them.
Well, we have some, some outstanding positions that need filled.
Really? Um, can I ask questions on the new position and have it explained to me?
Sure.
Because, uh, I'm a little worried about any new positions because of, sorry, being 127 over and possibly for some.
It's the behavioral learning specialist or it's the?
And is this one or is it seven or 20?
The social and emotional learning specialist.
It says immediate, it doesn't say where it goes.
No, she can hear it.
Dora? You want me to answer from here?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
That's, that's a position that, um, because of funding, at Nutterford in immediate, she was allowed to hire another title position, it's a federal position. And she chose, instead of another title, one teacher, she has chosen to put in an emotional support person. With her funding, it's a federally funded program. Just something in her title position, yeah.
I just, you know, I mean, I just didn't want to see us keep adding positions. If it's a federal fund, funded, I'm, I'm fine with that. Good go.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Okay.
Any further?
We're posting all of our known positions right now. We have the draft out for all the administrators and everyone to look at supervisors and make sure that we get all of our positions posted that we know right now. That's going to be coming out on Thursday. It's going to be quite a large posting.
You know, I always thought from the last six years that we were trying to bring down that number. And instead of riffing, we were eliminating.
Well.
Torging the positions.
I, I, I think.
That's, that's a tricky subject because we are not adding positions. We're losing students, so we're losing funding. So it's a combination of them sending us less funding, which means that shows that we have more teachers over the professional line of the state budget funding. So we could have 130 teachers, all right, and lower, we'll lose what, 10 students? And then it lowers the funding level, so we end up looking like we have 140 teachers. But we really haven't added any positions at all.
I can show you some of that next week.
Yeah.
That's okay, I just, I just, you know, you had mentioned the 127 over, over the state line. And I just wanted to, when I saw this, I, I thought, now she's saying we have a lot of positions.
I think there was a net, when, when we did the personnel, a net, uh, 12, 13, 14 reduction, and there would be an increase.
Okay.
There would be an increase, but Frankie's, it was spot on on that explanation.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's tricky, it, it's tricky.
I, well, I'm glad this is federally funded.
Yeah, we do evaluate when we have a position that's a retirement or, um, through attrition. We do evaluate those before we repost. The ones that we are reposting now are mainly the retirements or positions that were vacated due to resignations and, and those things, and we've held some of those for this posting. So that's why it's so large.
Um, could, could we not, like, when we have a new position like this, just so the information's out there? I mean, it says immediate supervisors, principal. Like, I didn't know if this was for high schools, you know, or all middle, all elementaries. And, uh, can you put on there something like that's federally funded? So that if suddenly we don't have the federal funding, it's a part of the job description and we don't have to keep paying for the job, it's understood?
Well, sure, yeah.
I mean, because this is not federally funded on it.
Well, we talked to Hannah David when she wanted to create this position, and we told her that's a real possibility. So I believe when they interview for this position, they'll be upfront and say, you know, this could be a one, one-year position, but we just can't post it as that.
Why not?
Uh, because positions are not for one-year contracts. We have to post, when we hire somebody, it's a position.
You can't post based on federal funding?
We do that with grant money, we do. And we always look at our title funding every year and readjust positions in the buildings according to title funding. Like, we have had some title teachers right now that were moved and they're going to be going into other buildings next year. So this position would, would be the same, or it could possibly have to be ripped. If, hopefully not.
In theory, Kristen, there's, there is a budget for Title I, and a lot of our, a lot of our people are, are Title I employees. So depending on the budgeting every year, which is always a question. I, I can remember, uh, and when I was in McDowell County, when I first got there, they placed every Title I teacher on, on, they riffed every one, depending on, on, you know, budgeting. I said, we're not going to do that, put those people through that. Well, we may not get the budgeting. Nah, that, that won't happen. But, uh, what she's talking about, what, what, what Dora's talking about is that all these positions, Title I will allow for additional positions, and we give some flexibility to the teacher or the principal how they want to utilize that. But it's only for this year, there may not be bu, uh, funding for that next year. So that position conceivably would be, that would be ripped, but that's how we post it. That, is that correct, Dora?
Yes, that is correct.
I think if you put that in the posting, if you put that in the posting, sometimes you get less of a pool applying just because it's there, it's easier to explain it at the interview.
Yeah, and I did talk to Hannah about that. Um, since it's a new position and it, it's a needed position, it would be great to have that position, you know, everywhere, but it's according to title budgets. But she's aware of that, that she would make them aware of that at the interview.
Okay. No further questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us down to our adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I think a motion.
This messenger has made the motion to adjourn, Mr. Doherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on adjournment? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Your honor, a piece, go on, piece.
Any adjourn?
Good job.
All right, we're adjourned.